Regular meeting for turn 18, and now session please rise and pledge allegiance to the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And here is the first motion, under oath, in this law, with the routine justice forum. Will the clerk please call the law?
Alderman Duyan.
Here.
Garriga.
Here.
Hollerin.
Here.
Johnson. Lewis.
Here.
Maranti.
Here.
Misan.
Here.
Rosenthal. Sar.
Here.
Volo.
Here.
Presety Pietro.
Here.
Corn Presety.
Motion to dispense with the breathing of minutes for the May 21st to May 24th meetings and place them on file. Can I have a motion and a second please? Rob and Irene. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion is carried. Motion to dispense with the breathing of the city treasurer's report as of May 31st and place it on file. Can I have a... introduction and a second please. Irene, you go on. All in favor, signify by saying aye please.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion is carried. Okay, on your desks are the committee reports. Again, can I have an introduction and a second please? Rob, Shereshaw.
Excuse me.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion is carried. Communications, we have the stewardship shops regarding the health benefit, community benefit agreement. May I have a motion and a second to receive that communication and place it on file? Irene, DeWan. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Actually bills first. Is there a list of bills on your desks? Any questions before I seek the introduction and second?
Is there anything new on you?
Anything new? Let's see if we can find something new.
Addison Kotsky, I'm sorry.
That's the audit.
That's the audit, I was going to say the order.
The fee accountant.
I'm sorry.
I think they're the fee accountants. I think Sittler is the auditor.
Oh, okay.
Yes, yeah.
Mayor left us spending 1466... oh, he's not here. Can I have an introduction and a second please? Irene, second. Rich. All in favor, please...
It was the audit, the annual audit that did run our conferences.
Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Oh, and now we will have a roll call vote please.
Alderman Duyan.
Aye.
Garriga. Hollerin.
Aye.
Alderman Johnson, who are voting on the list of bills.
Yeah.
You want a second and I'll come back to you?
Yes.
Lewis.
Aye.
Maranti.
Aye.
Misan.
Aye.
Sar.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Presety Pietro.
No.
Alderman Johnson.
I abstain.
Carried.
Okay. First resolution. Commissioner Deeds. Can I have a roll call vote please?
Alderman Duyan.
I abstained.
I abstain.
Garriga. Hollerin.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Maranti.
Aye.
Misan.
Aye.
Sar.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Presety Pietro.
Aye. I have voted abstaining. I abstained as well.
The next vote amends the count and council rule of order number five. A roll call vote please.
Alderman Duyan.
Aye.
Garriga.
Aye.
Hollerin.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Maranti.
Aye.
Misan.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Presety Pietro.
No vote.
Carried.
Next resolution accepts donations, two donations on behalf of the Hudson Fire Department, one from our own Shereshaw Nizan, and one from the Eyes of Life Fund, total of $7,894.91. Can I have a roll call vote please?
Alderman Duyan.
Aye.
Garriga.
Aye.
Hollerin.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Maranti.
Aye.
Misan.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Presety Pietro.
No vote.
Carried.
Next resolution adopts the New York State sexual harassment policy for the city Hudson. Roll call vote please.
Alderman Duyan.
Aye.
Garriga.
Aye.
Hollerin.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Maranti.
Aye.
Misan.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Presety Pietro.
No vote.
Carried.
The next resolution authorizes the mayor to enter into technical service changes of the aging companies for the R.I. project management. A roll call vote please.
Alderman Duyan.
Aye.
Garriga. Hollerin.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Maranti.
Aye.
Misan.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Presety Pietro.
No vote.
Carried.
Next resolution authorized the mayor to execute a community health benefit agreement with stewardship shops. A roll call vote please.
Alderman Duyan.
Aye.
Garriga. Hollerin.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Maranti.
Aye.
Misan.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Presety Pietro.
No vote.
Carried.
The next resolution reports to the New York State and local employees in age of higher than system. A roll call vote please.
Alderman Duyan.
Aye.
Garriga.
Hollerin.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Maranti.
Aye.
Misan.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Presety Pietro.
No vote.
Carried.
Resolution accepting youth department donations from the Berkshire Bank Foundation in the amount of $500. A roll call vote please.
Alderman Duyan.
Aye.
Garriga.
Aye.
Hollerin.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Maranti.
Aye.
Misan.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Presety Pietro.
No vote.
Carried.
A resolution accepting youth department donations from the Hudson Fishing Derby. New donations adding up to $1,250. Roll call vote please.
Alderman Duyan.
Aye.
Garriga. Hollerin.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Maranti.
Aye.
Misan.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Presety Pietro.
No vote.
Carried.
Another resolution accepting $100 also from Shereshaw Nizan to the youth department. Roll call vote please.
Alderman Duyan.
Aye.
Garriga.
Aye.
Hollerin.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Maranti.
Aye.
Misan.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Presety Pietro.
No vote.
Carried.
A resolution accepting the $10,000 donation to the Hudson Youth Department to help with improvements. A roll call vote please.
Alderman Duyan.
Aye.
Garriga.
Aye.
Hollerin.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Maranti.
Aye.
Misan.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Presety Pietro.
No vote.
Carried.
Now the next resolution. Before we vote on it, because it does involve the fund balance and there was no finance meeting tonight. And according to the new rule of order, any resolution involving the general fund needs to go to finance first. So we have to have a two-thirds to move this forward. If you're willing to move this forward tonight, tonight, see, can you raise your hand please? Okay, roll call vote please.
On the actual...
On the actual, yeah, this has already been...
Alderman Duyan.
Aye.
Garriga.
Aye.
Hollerin.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Maranti.
Aye.
Misan.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Presety Pietro.
No vote.
Carried.
So now we have new resolutions for tonight. The first one is a transfer of funds within the fire department account. Can I have an introduction and a second please? Irene? Rich? Can I have a roll call vote please?
Alderman Duyan.
Aye.
Garriga.
Aye.
Hollerin.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Maranti.
Aye.
Misan.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Volo. Presety Pietro.
No vote.
Carried.
Another transfer of funds within the various public works department accounts. Can I have an introduction and a second please? Rob and Irene, can I have a roll call vote please?
Alderman Duyan.
Aye.
Garriga.
Aye.
Hollerin.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Maranti.
Aye.
Misan.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Presety Pietro.
No vote.
Carried.
Can I have another local departmental youth fund transfers? Can I have an introduction and a second please? Rich and Rob, a roll call vote please.
Alderman Duyan.
Aye.
Garriga. Hollerin.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Maranti.
Aye.
Misan.
Sarar.
Aye.
Volo.
Presety Pietro.
No vote.
Carried.
Now the next one we're going to need to put forward because it does use the general fund. However, it's a refund that is then being repurposed for a different account, a different expense. So first we're going to need a... Resolution number 16. It's whereas additional equipment needs to be purchased to complete the upgrades to the youth department's heating system. And whereas the Hudson Youth Department has received a refund for returned equipment, it's resolved that the city treasurer being hereby is authorized and directed to transfer funds. In order to put this forward tonight, we need a two-thirds agreement. Can everybody in favor of putting this forward tonight raise their hand please? Okay, we can go forward. Can I have an introduction and a second? Tiffany and Mal, roll call vote please.
Alderman Duyan.
Aye.
Garriga.
Aye.
Hollerin.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Maranti.
Aye.
Misan.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Presety Pietro. Carried.
And lastly, resolution declaring a negative declaration under CBA with regard to local law number two. This is the law on our desk which involves the parking, as you know. Can I have an introduction and a second? Rob? Second? Tiffany? A roll call vote please.
Alderman Duyan.
Aye.
Garriga.
Aye.
Hollerin.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Maranti.
Aye.
Misan.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Volo. Presety Pietro.
No vote.
Carried.
And lastly, we are going to vote on that very same law. Can I have a roll call... oh, right, first of all, I need a motion and a second to enact the proposed local law. Sure?
Did you get any other feedback besides what was in the public meeting?
No. No letters, no... Yeah, no, I... I asked Matthew to send his and a letter and let it be put to the record, but that was it. Can I have a introduction and a second please? Rob? Call him. A roll call vote please.
Alderman Duyan.
Aye.
Garriga.
Aye.
Hollerin.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Maranti.
Aye.
Misan.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Presety Pietro. Carried.
Well, okay, for new business, we have a short presentation from Pam Man... Pamela Man, excuse me. Who represents the Coalition Against Bigger Trucks.
Yeah. Okay, thank you so much. I want to apologize for not having brought enough folders, but I have folders and business cards. And I'm happy to send along electronic versions of... take a folder if you're really into it, I'll send you electronic documents as well. Thank you. Yeah, the Coalition Against Bigger Trucks is a national not-for-profit. Our... we are in fact a coalition. Our national partners represent every local elected officials group, national group in the country, U.S. Conference of Mayors, National Association of County Officials, the National Association of Towns and Townships, U.S. Conference of Mayors, NACO, NACE, et cetera. All the national law enforcement groups, troopers, sheriffs, international chiefs, and National Association of Police Organizations, AAA, other safety groups. Vast array of folks across a whole realm of interesting organizations, all opposed to trucks getting heavier or longer. And let me add that included in that national group is the Truckload Carriers Association, which is kind of like a chamber of commerce, if you will, over the trucking industry in the U.S. And they represent 92% of the industry, including huge firms like Knight, Swift, J.B. Hunt. So this is not something that is anti-truck in any way. As a matter of fact, we work directly with the trucking associations, with the Owner-Operator Independent Drivers Association, who are the medium, small, and single rig folks, the small business part of the industry, as well as the teamsters, the men and women who drive the trucks. So who does want these bigger trucks? Currently, 80,000 pounds is the national standard. We've seen proposals and defeated them over the last few years at 91, 97, and 100,000 pounds. Huge increase in weight. The other piece that we see moving and has, we've defeated in '12, again in '15, we're working, and when I say we, I mean our national partners, our statewide association partners, and individual members, local elected officials, as well as local law enforcement. And in '15, we prevented the heavier and longer trucks from being included on the appropriations bill. Same thing's happening again in Congress this year, appropriations bill. If and when an infrastructure bill ever managed to get legs and move, that is actually the committee that it should be under. Transportation and Infrastructure in the House, EPW, and Commerce in the Senate. Why am I here? I live in Amsterdam. Why am I... I never work my own state. Usually I was telling Alderman and Hollerin, I'm usually in Kansas or California or someplace. Because I don't really worry about the New York State delegation. As a matter of fact, Senator Schumer and Joe Brand both helped us in '15 to defeat the heavier and longer truck proposals on the Senate floor. But you have a brand-new representative, Representative Delgado. Not only is he new to Congress, he's also got appointed to the T9 Transportation and Infrastructure Committee. So there are 100 new members of Congress. Those are the folks that we are working in their districts. Currently, there are nine of us to cover the 40 states we're trying to cover, so, yeah, we move fast. So what... why does that matter to you? Well, first of all, you have a truck route that goes right through town. Secondly, I understand that sometimes when the throughway sort of backs up, or somebody's trying to avoid a toll, let's say, they will kind of come through town and take a shortcut over to another of the interstates. If the federal government raises weights, they are per view over interstates. But what happens when the feds raise the max weight on the interstates is eventually everybody has to raise their truck weights. It's just the way it works. It's just a natural growth. The heavier trucks, longer trucks, equally bad for infrastructure and safety concerns. And the particular configuration we're talking about are longer doubles. If I could run my PowerPoint, and I'm sorry I can't, I would show you some operational characteristics of heavier and longer trucks. And one of the things that happens is what they call off-tracking, where instead of making... you've got tight curves in downtown Hudson, we do in Amsterdam too, or a T entrance to a bridge, they can't really make those curves well. They're going up and over your curbs, over your sewer abutments, you're knocking down your road signs, et cetera. So what do we know about 80,000-pound trucks? They pay for 80% of the infrastructure damage they do. What do we know about weights as they get heavier? 91,000, they pay for 60%. 97,000, they pay for about 50%. Who picks up the difference? We do. Taxpayers, right? And interestingly enough, the longer doubles, U.S. DOT did a study in '17 where they reckon... or '16 where they recommended to Congress, don't make any increases in truck weight or length because infrastructure damage is a mess and safety concerns are tantamount. And so what happens with the longer doubles is that they are operationally... you've got that sway. They impede into adjoining traffic lanes. And they were also... they did more pavement damage than any other configuration that U.S. DOT studied, including the triples out West. So, bottom line, the longer doubles would be a federal mandate. New York State DOT would have no ability to restrict where they run. They will be mandated to run on interstates, on the roads of the designated national network, which are state routes and some local roads, and five miles of reasonable access off of all those roads. So you're really looking at a real pattern of where those things will run. Heavier trucks, as I said earlier, once the feds change the weight on the interstates, the states have to fall in line. No truck stops or starts on an interstate. They have to pick up, they have to drop off. So what I'm saying to you is, I know you have issues with heavier trucks now. I've heard it from your police chief, I've heard it from other folks here in town. I've heard it from your county folks, for Columbia County. And I think the last thing in the world we need to do is have the federal government impose longer or heavier trucks right down on us. What can you do? You can write a letter. I'm happy to provide a template. The council could consider a resolution. I'm currently setting up a call with Representative Delgado and constituents from the district to discuss these issues. It's not a gotcha, it's just an educational call. Hey, we've got some concerns here, sir. Please consider those concerns before you vote on any heavier, bigger truck legislation that might come up in front of you. Yes, sir.
Do you have other resolutions?
Yes, sir. I do.
Appreciate if you send me one.
Yeah, be very happy to do so. And I will also, I promise, and again, I'm sorry, I've got another folder here. If anybody's just dying to look at this thing, please, please help yourself. I will send along all those documents that I've included there in electronic version. And it's like I told your council president, we don't make these stats up at night. When you have a chance to look at our white papers, you'll see all the citations, and they're usually U.S. DOT studies. Funding, our funding, I should tell you, as a national nonprofit, we get the bulk of our funding from the railroads. But interestingly enough, we also get funding from the trucking industry. Because, as I stated, over 92% of the industry itself does not want heavier or longer trucks. And the final thing I'll say to you is that, you know, railroads and trucking, interesting industries, and I don't speak on behalf of either. I speak on behalf of safety and infrastructure damage. But they're... they're not only fight for freight share, they're also each other's best customers because of intermodal. So it's an interesting balance that you're trying to achieve here with long haul and short haul, and what happens on our roads, and what happens, you know, when we're all out there as motorists.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, at the beginning of your presentation, you said there were some people that were supporting this, and I didn't hear what...
Oh, yes, I'm so sorry. I should have been more specific. It is literally a handful of some of the biggest, most economically viable shippers in the country. On the longer double side, you wouldn't be surprised to hear it's FedEx and UPS, right? On the heavier truck side, also you probably wouldn't be surprised, Anheuser-Busch, although I don't discredit beer, in any way. Anheuser-Busch and International Paper, they move heavy stuff, right? They want to put more behind a single truck driver, so they have an economic driver there. Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. A couple of notices. Our public... we have a public hearing on Thursday, the 27th at 5:00 here in City Hall for the purpose of hearing public comments on our community development needs and to discuss the possible submission of one or more CBPG applications for 2019. After that, hopefully 5:30, but maybe a little bit later, the finance committee will meet. And it's been rescheduled for that day, partly because they received a flurry of applications for events at the last minute. And then lastly, our legal committee meeting scheduled for Wednesday, the 26th, will be in the Hudson area library, not here. Any other new business from the council first? Tiffany?
I just want to state to the council and on behalf of the Housing and Transportation Committee, the rent reform regulation bill has passed across the state. I'm very happy about that. And so the people in the city who have concerns about affordable housing, and just to quote what the governor said, "I know full well the importance of affordable housing and what the existing rent laws set will expire tomorrow. I have immediately signed this bill into law." So I am proud of the governor for also supporting this.
Thank you. Anyone else? The community, any comments or... yes, please.
My name is Nicole Janino. I live in the 4th, 5th Ward. I work at Hudson City School District, and I work at the Hudson Department of Youth. I would like to make a statement about Tuesday, May 21st, Finance and Common Council meeting. At the finance meeting, one of the comments made was that there should be an engineer to find out exactly what needs to be done because Mrs. Hollerin was unsure Nick was competent to do this. It would be good to know that the head of the youth center, Nick Zakkos, has an extensive background in contracting field. The finance committee kept saying they did not have enough information when they had more information than I usually seen given. At the common council meeting, it was said by Mr. Maranti that the first time he had heard about the issue of the youth center was at the Youth and Aging Committee. After that meeting, he took it upon himself to call the code enforcement and have the room shut down, so he made sure the children were safe. If Mr. Maranti had bothered to go to the head of the department, he would have known that the youth center had not been using that room because of the water issue. Safety is the youth department's number-one issue and number-one priority. And we make sure the children are safe every day. It is beyond me why an alderman would go to code enforcement before first coming to the department head. I don't believe this would happen in any other department. I don't believe this would happen at the police department, the fire department, or DPW. There seems to be a double standard on anything that has to do with the youth center. The youth center was asking for $30,000 for the fix in electrical and roofing issue at the same meeting as the fire department. Was asking for a $1.2 million fire truck and $142,000 commit from the city for a boat. Although I hope the fire department gets their money, and they did, they didn't get any of the issues that the youth center did. The need... they needed a commitment from the city for $142,000 in less than a week, and got it. Never was there any talk about time or paperwork. There was just talk about how to come up with a commitment in such a short time. The youth... the youth center has been neglected for years, and the issues were inherited. The director of the center is now trying to make necessary repairs, and it seems to be giving a hard time every step of the way. The city should be working with the youth center and not against it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mal?
I just want us as a council to think about how to make, like, City Hall more family-friendly. Like, if we can, like, get, like, one of those... I know Peter Frank's doing those kind of portable libraries. Because I think about when people come here with you, there's nothing for them to do. And the audience doesn't get to speak until the very end of the meeting, so if they're there with young kids, like, it would be great for them to have, like, a book or something to look at.
Thank you. Tiffany?
That's a good idea. I just want to address Nikki. Thank you for coming in and speaking. I support the youth department.
I support the youth department, always have, always will, and as far as the fire department, you know, I ask as many questions as I can to find out what was going on and the need of the boat. You know, with that being said, I understand your frustration. You have been at the youth department for many years, taking care of our children, overseeing our children and the department, and I appreciate that. So I want you to know that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, I have a comment about the trucks. The, in the 4th ward, the trucks are coming down State Street to deliver to Harney and Sons, and they should not be coming on State Street. They should continue on the truck route, which is Columbia Street, all the way to Front Street, and then turn to go to the Harney and Sons delivery. They have been seen going down Robinson, which they can barely turn on, and I believe this is all issues about GPS and how they're being shown shortcuts. Rarely do I ever see any police over in that area. I think it's the people who live on North Second suffer a great deal, plus the State Street traffic. Anyway, just to tag into the wonderful comments that were presented around the large truck issues.
Yes.
We're getting hit very hard on the north side again.
Are there Harney trucks in here?
Most of them are going to Harneys because they are, at least some of them that I've seen go down, and I also have talked to the people who live right at the corner of North Second and Mill, and they say there's just far too much truck traffic. I'm only assuming that they're going to Harneys because that's the route. I mean, that's not the only trucks, but I do see somehow State Street's becoming the new truck route for the north side of the city, and they're not going all the way down. And I do support what Nikki said. I think the youth department gets the short end of the stick when it comes to the council's support. I don't know why it's such a controversy, but, like, let's help get it done and fix it and move on. Thanks.
I guess on the trucks, because Cross Street has that problem, and they've had to back up trucks in reverse on Cross Street before. Is there a way we can put up where, like, on those big intersections off of Third or wherever that says no trucks allowed or something that, you know, because people argue, I'm sure it's GPS, I guarantee it's GPS, but it's not unless you put up a sign that says, you know, you can't go down here. Is there something that you can look at?
You can tell DPW to order the sign.
I'll bring them right up.
I talked to Pam Man this afternoon. You know, with all these truck-related issues, enforcement is a big deal, and of course, signs help. I've seen doubles coming through Hudson on the north side, I mean, the east side, and apparently those are completely illegal off of the interstate. So that's kind of something. But how do you stop them? You know, if you call the police, could they get there in time to issue a ticket, you know, or do they even know that that's a ticketable offense? So, but yes.
We have meter lanes. Do we have specific offices that are traffic offices?
Meter lanes don't cover that.
I know that. I'm asking. Do we have...
Mayor.
I think you're absolutely right, Tom, and Linda. It's the police and this enforcement as well, and we have to make them more aware of the issue because usually there's two or three out there, but they're not actively aware. And I think it should be brought up definitely in the police committee meeting so they're very aware of it. And I will speak to them as well about it.
Mayor, can we do that? Can we create traffic officers for those specific reasons that we constantly...
Well, I think all of our police officers or traffic officers in general, having special people for traffic, I mean, we don't, that's a budget, but I think all of our officers are there to protect us and to watch traffic and to issue traffic tickets.
Yes, in general terms, we have, you know, what the police does, but, you know, with these specific issues, we hear the concerns of the trucks consistently, car accidents in certain areas consistently, and maybe this is a need for another department within the police. It's something to look into. They have it in other cities.
Irene.
Another idea, unless you have a budget for the extra staff, might be the big stationary devices that DPW puts up to say truck route closed if there's a parade, and maybe they place them at the spots where we're getting the most consistent Third Street, coming down State Street, something that says not, this is not a truck route, you know, ticketable...
I see many signs that say no trucks allowed. That's a very simple sign that we can pinpoint at certain places where they're going and they shouldn't go.
You're talking about the solar sign, right?
Yeah, yeah.
And as Pam Man said, a lot of it's determined by their GPSs and their various apps, you know. I mean, I don't know if you've used Waze, but that'll determine, that'll determine down streets, and that doesn't really account for what kind of street it is. Anything else?
For green light pass, from now, our people, regardless of their immigration status, are now allowed to drive with licenses for the supporting resolution that came from this council. Thank you all for that.
Yes, all right.
Thank you.
She'd be proud.
That, do I have a motion to adjourn?
We should adjourn.
Second. Anyone want to hold on to it? Anyone want to vote?